First item is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. And first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who's signed up to speak under public comment? Nobody in the audience wants to speak during public comment?
So I can put my name on and I can certainly read the questions that I have posed.
Yeah, that would be appropriate.
Okay. Do you want me to add my name to those?
Kim Swart. Just say your name out loud for the people who are watching, please.
So, Kim Swart, Chautauqua Drive in Wyndham, Chair of the School Governance Council. We just had some questions as a follow-up to the Wyndham Middle School budget after the School Governance Council kind of went through it pretty thoroughly. I emailed all the questions out, I think on or around the 27th of February. So, on page 81 of the budget, there was a year-over-year increase of, you know, just under 46,000. And we're just wanting to clarify that this is where the, indeed, the fourth administration position, you know, the additional one that we're asking for if it will be reflected under that line item. Because when we look at page 82 of the budget, it still only shows that there are three projected administrators. Do you want me to just go through these?
Yes.
Okay. So, on page 80, the attendance/social worker. So, again, there's an increase there of 60,698. And we're asking if that does represent the additional position that we've asked for. And again, you know, when you look at that compared to page 82 of the budget, there is no increase for either one of the positions. So, we just want to understand that. We were hoping to have some explanation around page 77 where the actual projected enrollment shows that there's a decrease, yet when you look on page 25, it actually says enrollment will continue to increase at both the elementary and the secondary levels. Page 78, the English language and math instruction, both show substantial year-over-year decreases. For math, we were made aware that we are going from three instructors down to two. But, you know, a decrease of 240,000, I know and change, that's a pretty substantial for just one instructor. So, we want to understand what that was made up of. And for ELA, what does represent that decrease? Because we hadn't understood there to be any loss of instructor at that point. Page 79, the technology and business slash, or, excuse me, technology/business and marketing position. According to that, there was no planned personnel for last year, so we wanted to understand that. But we had gotten an update email from Dr. Garcia on February 26th that, following a discussion with Principal Fiore, that that position does remain in the budget. And similarly, for the library-science position on page 80, same thing. There was no planned personnel for that. And as part of that email from Dr. Garcia on the 26th, that is still to remain in the budget. So, those are the questions we're just hoping to have some clarification on, since it just was not clear to those of us reading the budget how to interpret that.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wants to speak under public comment? Nobody else has signed up? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, the first, I mean, the next item on the agenda is update discussion on possible action on the Wyndham High School ed specs, which we won't be able to take action on tonight, but we do need an update on where we are and what's going on. I know you have...
So, the committee is working. We have another meeting tomorrow. We have one scheduled for Monday, but due to the snow, we're meeting tomorrow at 3:00. And we expect to send you a final draft to all board member on Friday. So, if anybody has any question regarding the one that was given to you, we can entertain those questions, and they will send you the final one on Friday.
So, does anybody have any questions? Mary.
Will we also be getting the ed specs for the central office, Board of Ed and Early Childhood?
Getting everything, yeah.
Everything, so we'll get them on Friday?
Friday.
Then, would the expectation be that we can take action at our meeting next week?
Margaret, Margaret, will we finish the editing, what you think, by tomorrow, by Friday?
I think so, but I, my understanding was that there might be another round.
Another, okay. So, we have a meeting, we have a meeting tomorrow at 3:00. And so, I will depend on what the outcome of that. But I think we're pretty good with the editing and the new information. Our goal is to get it to you by Friday. Whatever needs to get to you by Friday. I don't know what the outcome of that meeting will be tomorrow. I don't know if they will say what we need. But I think we've basically completed. There's some small tweaking that needs to be done.
I would just say that I hope that we can vote on it next Wednesday. Tracy.
At the building committee meeting on Monday, which Ms. Glucci and I are both members, there was discussion about the space not being able to accommodate the staff requests. Basically, the question was asked, "How many English teachers do you have?" We have seven English teachers, and I'm just picking numbers here, but I think these were the numbers that were given, teaching five periods a day, five days a week. And the state standard is 25 students per class. If that was the case, we'd need like 1,100 students to fill all those English classes. Are you guys taking a look tomorrow at kind of re-looking at the number of classrooms? Because that would mean we need seven English classrooms. And the similar things for science and math and stuff like that, which is more space by more than 17% than what's been allocated for the high school.
So, that has been the issue of concern on the part of the administration, central office, and the high school team, and that will be the topic of discussion tomorrow. The architects and the people involved in the, on the building committee, for example, say if you have 200 kids in that, each classroom is 25, so you need eight classrooms. Our contention, our proposal, is that maybe algebra, you have 25, but you may have a class of calculus that will be 15.
Right.
Or 18. So, you cannot say that 200 kids in that only require eight classrooms. So, I guess we need to educate them on that, that maybe algebra, 25 kids in a classroom. But we have to have a calculus class, or AP calculus, or AP, I don't know, not AP class. You may have 10 or 15 in that class.
Right.
And so, it's not 25. But I will use the word, I don't want to use force, but they are insisting that we make sure that every classroom has 25 kids. And we're saying, that's not the reality.
I understand that, but that's the state standard that our funding comes from. And so, if we go to the state and say, "We only have 18 kids per class on average," or something like that, that's going to lower our reimbursement. And this was a discussion we had on Monday, and this is a discussion I've had with Bob Roach and Mike Callahan since then, is that we now have to worry about reimbursement. One of the things that the architect initially was opposed to was to get the best reimbursement for our dollar. So, if we start saying, and I know Andrew is in a very small stats class because they had to create a second section because there was an overflow and because of scheduling needs. And I understand sometimes you have to have a smaller class because a kid wants to take physics and calculus or something like that. I get that. But you can't say that we have 35 English classes in a week either, if you have 7 times 5. So, maybe that could be used for history or something like that, is what they need to look at in making those spaces more usable.
So, I... Hold on, Mary, am I saying this as your perception from Monday? Is this correct?
I have slightly different memory, but at this point, I don't think I can contribute to this discussion.
Okay.
About the space in particular.
So, there is concern about the space, and I want to bring that to the board eventually after this. I think the board needs to know, there is concern about the space. You know, if it's an English class, what they're saying is going to be use the seven periods. So, teachers are not going to have their own classroom anymore. And so, our English class may be used for math, for example. So, we do have some concern, for example, the ECO lab. I don't want to put an English class in the ECO lab.
No.
Or thing like that. So, I can say that the administration on both parts, central office and the school, have been having this discussion about, I understand that the building committees want to use the space to the maximum, but we are saying, "Look, we can put that English class in ECO suggestion, put this class here," you know? So, we are saying, educationally, as educators, we are saying, "This is the best use of the space." I think eventually the board will have to know what, what space is going to be available and where it's going to go, because I think there's a big surprise out there to see that we're not going to have the space that we currently have at the high school.
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
So, we will work on it tomorrow, Ms. Madam Chair, and we're hoping to send you something. But that's where the discussion is, and I can tell Mrs. Lambert, I was the first to say, "You cannot say to me, 'I want to put 25 kids in calculus in a class and I only have 15.'" I'm going to, I'm going to run that class, even if I have 15. But you're saying, "I have to have 25."
Well, ECE and AP courses have a maximum of 22. So, there's, you know, there's a first problem. There's 24 in Andrew's, but that's okay.
Right. Mary, it looked like you were about to say something, and then Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I understand that these are averages. I would be surprised if every school in the state adheres to this idea that there's always, I mean, if there's one period a day when it's 15. So, I didn't recall the discussion at that level of detail, but I am a little concerned about, is the high school space the only one that's being squeezed and manipulated?
Absolutely.
As opposed to central office or, you know, so I would like to be mindful of, you know, the decisions that are made and say that the academics really have to be a priority.
Well, let me tell you another concern that we have. The concern that I have is that we have 775 kids all on the second floor. I mean, that's a concern for me as superintendent. And I think as superintendent is a valid concern, that you want to have this entire high school on the top floor, 675 kids on the top floor. Now, I'm not part of the building committee, and my decision may not work anything. What I'm saying as the educator, having the entire high school students all on the top floor is not the best educational decision.
Well, I have to say that because of a lack of ed specs, none of that's been able to be drawn. So, nothing's been drawn out for sure yet. We've just bubbled out where things could fit. Nothing has been set that the entire high school will be on the second floor. We're looking at space in the sports wing, we're looking at space everywhere. That was just lack of ed specs? We're going to say the second floor is the high school, and we'll figure it out when we get there. And we bubbled out the lower ECC and central office. Everything's going to need to be squeezed, but the high school shouldn't be the one that gets the most squeezing, in our opinion, in my opinion.
Okay. Murphy?
Ed specs.
I understand that this is a complex problem, particularly because we're talking about a space that's going to be used for, like the last one, 50 years. And you're not going to have the same number of students in English classes, probably. Or who knows what we'll be teaching 40 years from now. But the problem, part of the problem is mindset. This high school, when it was built, was built for, what, 1,200 students? And we're talking about downsizing to 675. I'm not sure that everybody's mind has conceived of a curriculum for 675 students as, when they're used to a curriculum that started out at 1,200 and may not have quite shrunk to 675 that we currently have. Regardless, time is money. We need to vote on this thing next week. So, whatever fire you have to light under the committee tomorrow, light it, because we have to vote on this thing next week.
I think by tomorrow we'll be finished.
Any other questions about the ed specs? So, board members should be prepared. If we, this gets dropped in our laps, to take a look at it. Is there any recommendation that you'd like to make about people getting questions ahead of time to you?
Well, yeah, so, send us the question that you have, and I expect that next week, the administration and I will, will bring to you the concern that I have. For example, one concern, and I know, Ms., I heard your concern, your comment, Mrs. Lambert, but having all kids on one floor, you know, for me, that's a concern.
Absolutely.
Things like that. So, I want the board to be aware of things like that.
So, will there be, like, next week when we vote, we'll be getting it, to look at it ahead of time, and we can, we can send questions along if we have them ahead of time. But will there be some sort of overview given to us?
Yeah, we'll give you an overview next week.
Verbally in that meeting, so that when we vote? Because some of us have never looked at ed specs before, myself included. I may not know what to pick up when I look through that document. It would be helpful to have a little roadmap given to us?
Next week.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Assuming we vote on it next week, what's the timeline then? Obviously, the state now has to look at it, and they have to approve it?
It goes to the building committee, and then it goes to the state.
So, what is the projected timeline for?
The state is very good at, once they get it, they, their turnaround will be between two to three weeks.
Anything else from anybody? Okay, so now we're going to move on to the budget. We found out yesterday, I said this at the executive committee preceding this, that from the Board of Finance, that they are expecting us to give our presentation of our budget to them at their meeting on March 27th, which is a normal day that we would be having a workshop. So, we are going to be canceling our workshop session on March 27th. And we will be preparing to present our budget to the Board of Finance on the 27th. I will just say that it's been made clear to us that they will not be taking any action on anything. They will just hear the presentation from us and ask questions. And then, during the month of April, will ensue the usual hearings and things of that sort. We have to hand it off, the budget off, to the Board of Finance by next Friday, March 15th. My hope is that we can come to some agreement tonight and approve a budget to move forward tonight. Otherwise, we will either have to have a special meeting to approve the budget, or we will have to do it on March 13th, which, if anything happens, like with no quorum or bad weather, where we don't want to be in a position where we were last year, where we, because of weather and quorum, we were not able to get the budget to them in a timely way. So, I don't want to repeat that this year. So, my suggestion is that we start out with questions this evening, but that we, we then move pretty quickly to discussion of the bottom line. What's the bottom line budget we want to be presenting to the Board of Finance? And center our conversation around that. There were some questions that were put out during public comment and that were sent to us ahead of time by the School Governance Council at the middle school. We were unable to get them back, answers back to you in writing before tonight. There's been just a lot of things going on. But I want to open it up and ask anybody, Christian, whether you have responses to those questions. And why don't you come up to the table, so you can speak into the microphone, and then... Or Rita and Christian, both of you. And then, we also, we got in writing answers to some of the questions that we had present, that we had asked the superintendent and the finance department to get us answers to. And we can then go into that. But first, I just wanted to see whether we could answer the questions between the two of you for the School Governance Council.
I'd send you Mrs. Swart's sheet.
Yeah, I sent them back this evening, a response to all of you. So, if you, I'm going to tell you verbally, but if you have as a reference. I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you any sooner, but things have been crazy lately. It was on my radar, on my to-do list.
You're just going to verbally tell us now, then?
Verbally tell you now, but it's sent also to you in your email. So, you've got it for public record. So, the first question, page 81, Principal Office Code 111, year-over-year increase of 45,966. Is this where we add the fourth administrative position is represented? You're correct, it is. I think based on your discussions a couple of weeks ago, we went back and we added an additional administrator. And we did not update the head count, I guess, because it was a last-minute piece. But when we update the book, we can update that head count schedule as well. Also, yes to question two, does the 60,698 increase represent the additional social worker? That's correct. Based on your input, when you came before us a couple of weeks ago, we added an additional social worker to the budget. But again, we didn't update the head count schedule because it was a last-minute piece. But we'll do that when we reissue the book in its final state. The enrollment question, I can't really respond to that. We get the, the way it works is when we meet with each principal, they give us estimates of their up-and-coming, their current enrollment, and then the next year's enrollment. And that's where we get the enrollment from. So, in some cases, probably you will see a slight increase. In this case, you didn't see it. So, I think it's more of a big-picture item, and it's not specific maybe to this school.
What page number did Mrs. Swart?
25.
I think it went down by like 10 or maybe 40 heads.
77 is where the...
I think we had estimated 650 for the upcoming year, but the year before was higher, so...
The increase on page 25 indicates...
77.
77, and then 25.
650, right, and the previous year was 14 higher. So, again, we got that 650 from Brett, and it declined over the previous year's numbers, so... But I think the comment that you referred to is a more general comment overall.
Has there been any in and out in the children that were, came here as a result of the hurricane damage? I mean, there'd been an influx. Some of those children have, maybe have gone elsewhere since, or have we still got?
I'm not certain of that piece, Dr. Su.
Across the district, so we still retain a lot of those students across the district.
We have many of them, but that might easily account for 14 difference in the middle school if...
The middle school numbers right now is, not counting the October 1st number, is at 665. I mean, October 1st, I don't know exactly what it was, but as of today, the middle school numbers are 665. So, today.
And we're estimating 650 for next year?
We inform Mr....
That's the number that the principal gave us?
No, the principal was very clear, it was 665. 665 in the middle school. And we're looking at what is coming from the elementary school, and so we expect to see... Where's the middle school?
So, what's the answer to the question?
Hold on, I want to see what the middle school looked like.
77. Are your answers...
Where's my, my page number?
Yeah, my answer's on red.
My page number is 7.
Not in red, in what I printed out, but...
Wyndham, not child. Middle school, okay, middle school. Middle school.
Chris, while Dr. Garcia is looking that up.
Yep.
An administrator is only... What is the number?
We added in 110,000 for the administrator.
But it only goes up by 45.
Yeah. I think I'd have to go look at that piece, but the increase is due to the additional head. I can't tell you offhand why.
Administrator has to make more than that.
110,000.
Right.
It wasn't a top-level administrator, it was something below that.
No, he's an administrator. He's a dean of school.
Dean of school, yeah.
Right, so I make 110,000.
Is that an assistant principal?
Yes, equivalent to an assistant principal, right. So, that needs to go up more than $45,000.
Well, it's offset by something else, but I'll have to get back to you on that piece.
So...
Please, thank you.
Then, the English language and math instruction changes. What we did is, we met with, or Rita met with Brett and went over all the FTEs for the positions.
That's a full-time equivalent.
So, she, she went and verified all of the positions, and that's what's reflected in the budget. But what she did, Rita tells me, is that she split personnel between multiple disciplines, so that she split people between math and science, math and ELA, ELNA and social studies based on our notes. So, that's what occurred, is she split the people between different disciplines. So, there was declines in ones she moved the people out of. And it looks like there's fewer heads there. Now, Brett's gone, you might want to take a look at that again, if that's sufficient. Again, she verified the amount of FTEs. If that's not correct...
Well, the FTEs will not go down at the middle school. Because when we did this budget weeks, months ago, the middle school was at 655. Today, that's 665. So, FTEs are not going to go down because student enrollment are going up.
There's some allocation going on that wasn't there before, I believe.
There is allocation that she is splitting teachers from, not just teaching math, teaching two different subjects.
Science, yeah.
So, the FTEs are going to change when we allocate those teachers, when they weren't allocated last year. They were 100% math.
So, my question is, Ms. Swart is correct in that the budget book projects 650 students in the middle school next year. If that number ought to be 665, that's 15 more students. So, what impact does that have on the budget?
Well, in theory, they would have a budget that's 15 times whatever the per pupil expenditure is.
Okay, so this should be...
So, in theory, we could add more money to their budget.
Okay, but where would it come from?
Well, that's a good question. There is no place it comes from unless they fund the higher level of a budget.
Unless we allocate a front.
Unless we ask the town for more money.
Okay.
Or we cut something else.
That's not, yes, Mark?
Again, on page 78, I understand you're, you're telling me you refigured the FTEs, but that's $400,000 of refiguring FTEs. You've taken 226 out of English, Certified Professionals, and 198 out of math. That's, that's a bizarre number, that's a lot of numbers to figure out with FTE. That's like four teachers or five teachers worth.
We don't make the budget, Mark. We go and ask for the principal's opinion about it. If you feel that's not right, then we'll have to go back and update it.
I guess, Dr. Garcia, that's a question for you. I mean, if we were 523 this year in ELA, how can I go down to 296 unless I'm getting rid of the log number of teachers?
We have not reduced any ELA teacher in the district. We have not.
And we're not paying them?
We have not reduced any ELA teacher in the district.
Rita, it looks like she wants to say something.
The allocation may differ.
I've also sat with Geraldine in HR and verified these FTEs. I would have to look why it's such a reduction, because we're using actuals this year, and we were using the average last year. And we're comparing it to a budget that wasn't reduced and corrected? Am I...
Yes, yes.
Correct, okay. So, I would have to take it person by person to give you that actual figure of why it's going down. But I can, I'm letting you know that I verified these with Brett and with HR, that we went through every teacher and every FTE. Now, their salaries might be a lot lower than the average salary that we used last year. I'm using actuals. I'm using what they actually make. If they come in lower, and they're not making 80,000, and they're only making 40,000, that's one teacher, $40,000 difference on top of, and the benefits.
So, Rita, what you're explaining to us is that when we look at the budget book and we look at the numbers that are in for the next fiscal year that we're going to adopt...
The ones that are projected.
It's based on actuals.
Correct.
There's no, there's no averaging.
Plus their increase.
There's no averaging and estimates.
No, in the past, that's what we did.
Right, so, that could be where, when people are looking at the budget, there's some difference.
Mark?
That could be, but that, the other side of that argument is that I must have had a million-dollar surplus last year. Because you, if I had budgeted 523, but it was really close to 300.
Right.
And I budgeted 588, it was closer to 390, I must have had a huge surplus last year. That's the other side of your argument. That's the other side of the fence. I mean, it can't be both ways.
Well, it goes, it does go both ways, because the average you'll have, sometimes we got higher expenditures, people, you know, because the, the average underestimated the amount of the, the teacher, especially in disciplines where, like, a special education, where you might have a, you know, a higher salary. So, an average is an average. In some cases, when we, when we have turnover, we hire in at a lower level, so...
I could check the numbers again, if you want me to check them again.
Geraldine, how many ELA teacher we have in the middle school? Do you know?
I didn't bring my materials.
But we have not, we have...
We've not decreased.
We have not decreased teachers at the middle school, not one.
Okay, but I have to second...
But you're right, but you're right.
Mr. Doyle said, there's the 200 and some, 225 at the middle school, 133 at the high school, 166 at Wyndham Center. And then, Sweeney went up 245 for certified personnel?
I think Sweeney, in the case of the out-of-sen program...
They moved the Titans program over.
Program Titans to the middle school.
Okay, then where was that before?
North Wyndham.
North Wyndham.
Okay, so, North Wyndham only went down 218, though. I'm just saying, like, at some point, this money has to add up somewhere. I'm not doubting that, but at some point, we were, like Mr. Doyle said, a million dollars over, where did that money go?
I don't know if that's accurate. I would have to look at what we budgeted.
I'm not accusing you.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that you can't compare apples, they're not apples to apples. Last year, we used averages. This year, we're using actuals.
Right.
So, I would have to look by person to see what the difference was, to see how to come up with the 400,000.
But I think in December, Dr. Su asked for actuals, so that way we could compare those things.
So, how can we know what we're doing here if we don't have anything that is accurate? And then, is everything an average or an average?
You know, they're saying, Jaime, that this, this year it is.
Last year, the budget was based on averages, and this year, it's based on...
This year's on head count.[1794.48] This year's on headcount.
Because we got Munis for the first time. We're able to pull out by position everybody's salary, verify that with each principal, that that position was there, and that's exactly what they were making, and then we added whatever the contractual increase was.
Increase.
In the past, we just said, okay, we'll increase the average by three and a half percent, or three percent, or two point five percent. And in some cases, that's going to underestimate the cost, and in some cases, that's going to overestimate the cost. This year, we've gotten away from that because people want to see actuals. So we faced everything on the actuals payments in the system, based on Munis, the position control, and the salary record.
All right, so do I understand this correctly, that the eighteen nineteen numbers, those columns, are based on averages?
Yes.
Yes.
And that you, because we switched the accounting systems and the old system didn't make it possible, it's not possible to pull the actuals from the eighteen nineteen to compare to the nineteen twenty?
Well, everything's possible, and you can do that. But the thing is, that comparison of eighteen nineteen is what's on our financial system. So you can't get away from that. That's our system of record. That's what we have to come in at.
But the actual eighteen nineteen, the actuals...
Then we're not done yet. How can we pull actuals when we're still in the middle of the year? The year's not over.
Well, yeah, okay. All right, so that, but so those are budgeted amounts based on averages rather than actuals.
Right.
So...
I do believe next year, we should be looking at...
So line by line, some of the kinds of comparisons about why is this number bigger than that number are going to be kind of a mix of apples and oranges, and you can't...
Exactly, as you have the positions, but they're making on average ten thousand dollars less, you're going to pick twenty thousand in savings.
But if I look at the bottom-line general fund budget proposal here, it's on page twenty-six, the forty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, which is the number that's in the proposed motion for this evening, that number can certainly be compared to what the voters passed at referendum in September.
Yes.
And the difference there is...
That's not the right number. This is...
Forty-nine million...
Just schools.
No, no, forty-nine million, nine fifty-one, one-ten is everything.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, Dr. Su, you're right.
Okay, because that's the number that we're, you know...
That's comparative.
We were told when we asked clarifying questions that the numbers on page twenty-seven are the actual numbers that were passed after the referendum.
Correct.
Are reflected in that, yes.
Yeah, so what happened is we went through three referendums.
Right.
So each time that we passed a new, I had to update the budget to reflect the cuts that we had to make to get to that number. And then final round of...
There was some confusion about this previously.
Page twenty-seven doesn't have everything, because it doesn't have the central office.
Yeah, that's just all the schools consolidated with the central offices.
So if you're really looking at the bottom line, you're looking at the total budget numbers on page twenty-six.
Right.
Right?
I'm sorry about that.
And what we actually vote on, you know, the adjustments to the budget book to try and make everything make sense, we still have time to play with, but what we have to vote on is whatever number we decide to ask the Board of Finance to put forward to the referendum.
We've had as much, we've, last year, I think it was three point six we put forward. We've put forward above four, like four point one or four point two.
So as I understand it, forty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars is four point one percent more than was passed that referendum last September.
Four point one eight percent greater.
Yeah, greater than was passed...
Four point one-two, I thought it was.
Okay.
Four point one-two.
Than was passed at referendum, right?
Right.
So that's, when we're talking about a percentage increase, that's what we...
Yeah, four point one-two, correct.
Okay. All right, got it.
If that's the budget that got approved this evening, that would be four point one-two percent increase.
But again, you know, if you guys still want to make changes, either up or down, that's, we can make those and get the book out next week.
Yeah, we can, but looking at the column comparisons between, you know, through here is going to, is not going to be definitive because you're comparing actuals against averages.
Yeah, this is a transition year for us.
Yep, I got it.
Next year should be easy.
Totally accurate as far as, it should only reflect salary changes or FTE changes, but not going from average to actual.
Okay, now, looking at what is on page twenty-seven, the difference in proposed spending for the schools. One million, one hundred and ten thousand, eighty-six, is that actual versus actual or actual versus average?
That is our, well, I mean, since eighty percent of the salaries are, eighty percent of the budget is salaries, well, salaries and benefits. Yes, that's versus the average salaries. It's actual versus the average salary. What's driving it is our effort to get the benefits to the place where they needed to be. That's the issue here. What's driving that is almost entirely...
I just want to know what the difference is, okay, so that difference is also a difference between average and actual, so it's not...
Right.
So it's not exact, so on a line-by-line basis, it's not exactly going to be...
Right. Exactly.
Our, what would be nice is next year after, or whenever, this year, this year, not next year, this year, next calendar year, when we actually get a budget passed and we talk in executive committee about things possibly being delayed and stuff like that, depending on what the governor does, if we get an actual, like, okay, they cut fifty thousand dollars, I'm just picking a number. So this is what all those numbers line up to. We know that we're going to have to do budget transfers and stuff like that during the year, but fifty thousand dollars is going to come out of, ten thousand here, four thousand there, three thousand there, and it all adds up to fifty thousand. So that way, next year, you come to us with that amount passed with fifty thousand less. And then we're looking at what we actually budgeted this year, and transfers can happen, I get that, and what we're actually budgeting for next year, not wait till now and say, well, we kind of cut some there, we cut a little bit there, and I'm not quite sure where that came from, but we got down to the number we needed to get to. I can't, it can't be that arbitrary for me to plan for next year. If we spent, you know, if we cut all fifty thousand out of buses, I'm just picking something, then, okay, this is how we had to transfer money to make transportation work, so this year, the actuals should be more like this. Rather than they cut a million dollars and we go, ah, we just pulled it from where we could, that doesn't give us a basis for next year's budget, which doesn't give us a basis for this year's budget. So next year, we'll have trued-up numbers according to what the salaries actually are as opposed to an average, and trued-up numbers according to what we actually spent this current school year, well, for next year.
What I've asked for is moving forward that along those lines, Tracy, is that we get much closer to what we get at the town level, where there's, where there's a proposed, there's last year budgeted, I mean, this past fiscal year budgeted, this past fiscal year actual.
No, we don't, it's the year before that, so it's two years before.
Right, two years before that.
So it's the previous year's budget, which is the comparison, and then there's two years of actual.
Right.
And we've discussed that sort of on the side, Rita and I, and we can obviously do that, but over two years programmatically, things will change quite significantly, and so it might confuse people more than helps, but we can do it.
Well, we can talk, I mean, we have time to talk about it, right? We're not going to resolve it here.
No, I mean, it's not hard to do, in other words, but that would be the...
Because ultimately, in May, when the budget passes, you have a number. And then you have to look at, and you have to meet with Geraldine and say, okay, this is moving there, that's moving there. We're cutting these positions, we've cut this supplies, whatever. And then you have the budget you have to work on. So when the secretary here at the high school says, I want to order a million dollars worth of notebooks, you say, no, that's not in your budget. They don't just order it, and you say, okay, here it is, and then go, oh, no, we're a million dollars short. That has to work somewhere before, once the budget passes, before we get to where they can order stuff and we can hire people and stuff like that. Well, those numbers have to get laid out somewhere.
Because we can encumber, we know what we're going to encumber.
Right.
We know what PD is going to look like, we know what books are going to look like, so you encumber the money. If I'm going to spend sixty million dollars on book, I'm going to encumber sixty million dollars for books.
Well, the other thing, I just want to finish what I was saying, no, it's okay. The other thing is that I think we could avoid the kind of confusion that we have, for example, with the School Governance Council coming to us and asking these questions, that if in that budget book, there is somewhat of a narrative that explains any big differences, you know, any differences, like, the reason this number looks this way is these people were shifted to this place, or these are new positions, or the budget that's being proposed to you makes this change. Right, so I think it will be a lot, I think it will be a lot easier moving forward for us to make more sense out of it.
I think into, you know, projections, you know, that's what they are for. And then behind each projection, there is a rationale of why are we projecting this and how, and something has got to be there somewhere. You know, if you spent something last year, then we expecting to spend more, so we can project. That's what I don't, at least.
Well, our budgets are our best estimate of what's projected to be spent.
Are you saying programmatic, like, one of the things that the principals and the administrators do when they sit down and make their budgets is think about all those things?
What I'm seeing is the rationale behind it.
Right, right.
You know, they were changing this and that because something happened that we cannot account for. And I'm not seeing something very definite, you know, in those projections. Maybe it's me that I'm not seeing it, but I like to see something more definite. Why are we projecting this? Why are we thinking that this is going to be hundred thousand dollars more? I know that because of the, some of the principals said that they needed this and that.
I think part of it is our cost drivers. When we first go into the exercise, the first workshop, we try to say, if nothing changed, and we just went with all of our inflationary expectations, i.e. contractual increases, teachers getting three point three percent, non-certified getting two point five percent, transportation going up by three percent, tuition going up between five and seven percent.
Okay, you've made your point.
You know what I'm saying? We do that, and we say, no changes, nine percent increase. But we can't come in with a nine percent increase. So what do we do to bring it down? I mean, that's what the exercise we've been going through is realistically, we like to ask for six percent because that's what we need to cover our costs, but we can't, so...
Okay.
So let me ask a question here. If, is Munis going to make it possible so that when you set up the bookkeeping at the beginning of the fiscal year, you essentially have the same numbers that are in the budget as passed at referendum?
That's what we do, yes.
Okay, so that...
Not right off the get-go, because remember, if a budget is passed in October, I have to get the school system up and rolling.
Yeah, okay. No, I understand that, but if the budget hasn't passed on July first, then you basically roll over last year's budget until a budget is passed.
Yes.
Okay?
Exactly, but it's close enough.
Well, that's what you're authorized to do.
They give us a quarter of last year's...
Yeah, you're usually authorized to go at the previous year's rate until the budget passes, and then you have to make the adjustments. But once a referendum is passed, Munis should be able to print out effectively the budget.
Right.
And the only changes that should happen to that should be run through transfer approvals.
That's exactly what happens.
So at any point, you ought to be able to say, at least, what the budget said.
Yes.
Okay?
Revised budget.
Yeah, well, budget is passed as referendum as modified by approved transfers. Okay, that's beyond what we've had in the past.
We did it last year. I brought a revised budget in.
Okay.
I mean, they're not significant changes, they're small lines, but yes, this year, there were some significant ones.
All right, well, I just, we're now fully on Munis, and so going forward, we should actually have this.
Mark?
Well, like a dog with a bone, I don't want to give this up because I still don't see these huge swings between averaging and actuals. But my other concern is going to your actuals, as of May, these actuals are out of date. We have staff that are going to retire in May, we have staff that don't retire till August because they're afraid we will cut them off benefits through the summer. I've been through this many, many times. So these actuals are not actual, are not a budget I can count on because you're going with actuals, but that person won't be here. It's going to change as of September. How are we, you're going to have to readjust the budget. The averages at least gave me some leeway, and I don't see twenty thousand, a twenty thousand dollar difference up or down. If I'm actually, if I'm using sixty-five thousand as the average teacher salary, I don't see how that equates into three hundred thousand dollars worth of a mistake or a change of the budget line. I'm really having difficulty with this actual versus averages because of the differences. They are just huge, and that's not explained by a twenty thousand dollar spread between, I actually paid this teacher seventy thousand instead of my average of fifty-five or sixty thousand. It just, it doesn't explain that huge number. So I've got concerns with your actual versus average, I want to dig into that a little bit more, but I'm more concerned about what happens come September when your actuals aren't actual anymore because we've changed twenty-five staff members. We've got an interim principal at the high school instead of the regular one. We have enough staff flow that I really worry about how are you going to adjust for these in mid-year?
Do you want to ask, answer that?
So you're right, if we have an open position or somebody retires, they're retiring at the highest, typically, they're retiring at the highest salary. So that's what's in the budget. And I'm not sure what your question is as far as...
Well, when I use an average, when I use an average, then I, then, it was an average. So if a person retired at the highest, and then I brought them in lower, then, okay, I was benefit. But not everyone retires, not everyone leaves here at the highest salary. We have many teachers leaving in the third and fourth year because they can get paid ten thousand dollars more down the street, and I may replace them at a higher salary. So your actuals were based on a number that doesn't exist come September, and now I have a budget based on that actual. So what am I going to do October when I have to readjust your salary figures because now the actual is different? Because you didn't go with the estimated average.
Well, I think you're going to have an unfavorable variance. If you have, if that person, if that person leaves and he's at the highest salary level and you hire somebody that's lower, you're going to have a favorable salary variance. And that can be explained by the fact that the guy retired and we hired back somebody at a lower level. Now, if it happens in the opposite direction, you know, you have an unfavorable variance. And that's what a budget is for, it's a guideline, and you're going to have both up and down variances because that's just the nature of personnel, that, you know, you're going to have differences. I mean, averages had issues and people had issues with averages. And personally, I liked averages, but people have been asking for actuals, so that's the direction we went in. Plus, we have a new system which can give us the number right on, so I think we gain more than we lose. In each case, it has its pluses and minuses. But they tend to average out.
I believe in October, say, you know, when you got all of these staffing changes that you're assuming, we have an encumbering system for that. We hire the new person, it gets encumbered. So we should be able to see by our financial system if we're over or under in October at every single school. So I'm not sure...
Yeah, I understand, and that's, but that's why I would have stuck with average, I would have gone with the actuals. But I'm still very concerned about a two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand dollar difference in those two line items. And you're trying to explain to me as actuals versus averages, and it can't be actual versus averages. There isn't that big a difference.
It is more than that because we met with Brett, and there are teachers that she split between math and science, ELA and...
History.
History. Yeah, I couldn't remember exactly. There was three different categories that we split, so I will have to look at it, and I can, I wasn't giving that email until today.
Okay, we have two people with their hands up. Jaime had his hand up first, then Murphy.
Just a question, you know, to clarify, page seventy-seven. Okay, I'm seeing, let's say, number one hundred, certified personnel. Okay, I see the two thousand, nineteen, twenty is the number, three million, two eighty. Then year two eighteen, two nineteen, three, four, forty-two, which makes a reduction of one hundred and sixty-one thousand. How did this number came to be? Where do you get the three hundred, the three million, two hundred and eighty? How did it come about because of a principal territory that they were going to reduce personnel? Or how did this number come about?
Just what she said earlier, that they did the actuals.
And layered on top of that are quote-unquote, our efficiencies and turnover factors that are in scenario three. We apply to just the top side of both the high school and the middle school because we know we're going to capture certain savings through the implementation of Kronos, through turnover of two hundred thousand dollars.
My question is, did it come from the budget that the principal sent to you?
Yeah.
That, and the fact that we agreed that scenario three, we're going to achieve some savings through Kronos and turnover, that we can't specifically tie it to any person, but it's going to be captured through the new system, through the new timekeeping system.
But Chris, this has nothing to do with that, this is certified personnel.
Yeah, but we...
So it's a certified personnel.
That's the account we apply it to.
It goes back to what Mr. Doyle said. He was using averages in two thousand and eighteen, and now he's using, we asked to use actual. Certified personnel are not going to be bothered with Kronos, so you're not going to get any saving through certified personnel.
But turnover, we will.
And that, you know, we have gone down years ago from five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. We make sure that every student has a teacher when the year starts. I remember five years ago when I came, we used to bank and gamble on the turnover of teachers. I remember five years ago when I came, we used to bank and gamble on the turnover of teachers. No, that had been reduced about 100,000, so you can't, you can't count them that way.
Well, we can take it out of the budget, but it's going to increase your budget.
Okay. Jaime, did you get your answer?
Yeah, I just wanted to know where it comes from.
Yeah, okay, Murphy?
I can see one place that it came from. Remember, we had this discussion last year about the certified staff budget and the fact that our actuals were always less than the budget. And the reason they were less than the budget is that most years, we didn't fill every position on the first day of the school year. So you have a budgeted position there that's vacant for part of the year, or somebody leaves during the year. And there's lots of ways that the position is vacant during part of the year. So if you're working on averages, you end up not spending...
You can't hire the math position, so I mean, it's...
Yeah, and the position is vacant.
But they're not actually there.
And, or you don't get them until October instead of in September. And so you actually have money in the budget that doesn't get spent for the entire school year. And, no matter how tightly you try and control that, if you basically say, how many positions do we have? And you budget on the basis of filling all of those positions for the entire year, you're always going to end up with a situation where your actual is going to be less than the budgeted that you started out with, which is why last year we actually budgeted it 97 percent. And I actually argued for budgeting for less than that because, just looking at prior years, we had consistently been spending like 95 percent of the certified teachers. And then when we overspent transportation, where did we get the money to pay for the overspending in transportation? Out of the excess of the certified, you know? So, so the fact that you're, in all these cases, you're showing, when you do averages against actuals, that the actuals are less than the average produced? Well, the average is based on filling all the positions. The average is based on what you actually paid out, which is based on some of those positions not being filled for the entire school year.
I think we're going around and around, talking about the same point over and over again here.
That's accurate.
Is there any more on this particular point?
So I'm not too worried about that.
Pardon?
The only thing that worries me about that is that if you budget based on actuals and then you actually do fill all the positions for the whole school year, you are going to have a variance that you're going to have to figure out a way to fill.
But we want that to happen, so we have worked very hard.
Well, we do, but that's a nicer problem than the other way around.
We have to mention the teaching question first at school.
Yes, I know.
We still have the questions.
Pardon?
Two of the middle school questions.
Yeah, we need to finish those questions.
Sorry about that. We'll go back and look at the headcount and we'll go get back to you on that piece. Because to Mark's point, to your point, technology and business, I believe that position was, when I looked at last year's budget, was Joanne at the middle school at technology. And I guess when we met with Brett, that position wasn't...
What position?
The technology position was not budgeted.
The technology position has never, never been removed from the budget. That I can assure with my, with, Carolyn? Technology position has never been removed from the budget.
We'll have to look at that.
Never. And I have the director of HR. And I know why that position cannot be removed from the budget. That position is not, cannot be touched.
Well, we'll add it back.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we'll add it back.
Well, does it add bottom line numbers to this?
Um, yes, it would add. On average, it's probably about 60,000.
I want actuals.
Well, I'm, I don't know who the person's going to be, so I have to go with an average.
Yeah, when we don't know who it's going to be, we're going to have to...
But my question is, if it wasn't in there, it needs to be put in there tonight if we're going to approve a budget?
Yes, if that's, if you want to fill that position, correct.
How do they remove that position? We never said to remove that position. It's not a vacancy?
It's not a vacancy, I know.
No.
But who's filling it now?
We don't want to get top personnel.
We don't want to get top personnel, but it's not a vacancy.
You can't mention names, that's the problem.
Yeah, but the, but the fact is, it's been zeroed out in the budget.
So we need to have a motion to add it back in and we need a number?
6450.
No, not with benefits, absolutely not.
Well, I'm just saying the salary piece, on average.
Well, the benefits are...
All right, I know, it's about 85,000.
85,000, right, about 85,000, yeah.
85,021 if you want to...
Okay, so let's hold that, let's hold that 85K for the tech position.
It was in there last year. I have last year's budget vote.
It was in there last year.
And it was in there the year before.
Okay, now are there, are there any more questions that we need to answer for the library, science, library?
The library, I can't, I can't explain that.
Library has not been taken out of the budget either.
Wasn't it taken out last year? That was certified librarian.
We have a certified librarian.
We have a certified librarian there, what we don't have is a non-certified.
Non-certified.
Bears, middle school and high school have certified librarians.
Three schools have certified. So is that a dollar amount we need to add back in then?
85,000. To go with what we've spent in 1819, then it's 85,000, same as what's with the other one.
So, 85...
Another 85,000, yep.
85 plus 85 is 170.
Or library.
170.
And, okay, have we answered all the questions?
We've answered all the questions that we...
Yes, thank you.
Ask a question.
Yes, Tracy. In previous iterations of the budget, when we were having the workshops and stuff like that, Dr. Garcia, you indicated that you wanted to cut down some coaches and some ICs. Where is that reflected here?
That was in the first scenario that we presented. So we did cut down eight total.
From?
From the beginning, from 24.
Okay, can you send an email and let us know what buildings they came out of?
Well, we don't know that yet. So we don't know what building that's going to be. Because we don't have them in the building, so we don't know.
So how is it reflected in the budget?
With those deposition, so those eight positions.
It was spread across.
Spread across the district.
Spread across.
Does it come out of central office spending or does it come out of building spending? Like, I don't know how to reconcile that mathematically.
How do you put it in there, Rita? How do you cut the eight positions?
I think, I have to go look, but I think I spread, I put one like in each location.
Each building, each building still have one.
So each building should have lost one?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what I did.
Would that be considered certified personnel?
It's certified personnel.
Okay, because I'm just looking at the middle school. Sorry.
Okay, do you need some water?
No, I have, I have here.
What page are you looking at?
Um, wait, am I in the right budget book? Yes, I'm in the right budget book. 161,447 is the change in the middle school. Page 77. Is the object detail? Excuse me. 161,447 is the certified personnel. But the administrator only went up $45,000.
That we know that's an error there.
Right, so is that an IC or a coach or a combination of both?
What, the administrator?
No, the certified personnel.
The certified personnel should be a regular certified teacher for IC or coach.
Right, so that's where that would have come out of?
It would have come out of there, right.
Okay, so then, if we're not cutting, I understand we're not cutting teacher positions, but if we're cutting that, then they then bump?
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily they will bump. We already have a list of teachers that are retiring, for example.
Okay.
Okay, and we feel very confident that we could place those teachers. I mean, if we get to that we have to do that, we will. But right now, we already have a list of teachers that are retiring. We expect that by May, June, we will have those vacancies.
Okay, so then it's not, this isn't a reflection of the savings then, this is a reflection, it's not a reflection of the truing the numbers, it's a reflection of cutting those two positions. Because in the high school, it's 133. That can't be truing the numbers and removing...
Chris, where do you put those positions?
Does that, does that make sense?
I have to go look and get back to you because I can't...
82.
But we did made those in the first scenario, Mrs. Lambert. We did come up with those in the first scenario.
Well, do you feel like you need that answer tonight, Tracy?
Well, in relation to Tracy's point, I'm looking at page 82.
We've added a half, we've added a half instructional consultant. We went from 0.5 to 1. We haven't reduced that. We haven't reduced any of the numbers according to these figures.
Right, well, but we reduced a certified teacher according to page 82. Went from 54.5 to 53.5.
And we've added a halftime consultant.
These numbers just aren't adding up to me and...
So, so I think when we did this here, they usually put what was projected at a particular time, one math coach, one ELA coach, one data coach. Okay, that's what we're, Geraldine, did we change the projected number for 19?
For the summary, staffing summary page? The projected were based on...
We only have one projected, so you say we only have one projected there. Instead of having two projected, two coaches, we only have one.
Coaches. And that was before the different scenarios were developed. No, no, it says academic coach ELA, actual 2018, projected 2019. It went from one to one. Academic coach math, it was half of one in 2017, one in 2018, projected for 2019 is one.
So that's correct because there will only be one academic coach at the middle school next year, or any school.
So neither of those numbers have changed from this year's, from one to one, from one to one.
It should have changed from one to one and from one to zero.
But it didn't. And then a teacher went down one and we said that, you said there were no teacher cuts.
Well, the certified, the coaches are considered certified teachers. They're not classroom teachers, but the coaches are the certified teachers.
But it says you still have one coach in ELA, one coach in math and one teacher less, so that is a cut.
I wouldn't pay attention to this, this is when they did it, it was before these scenarios. They did this much earlier before this scenario. Before these scenarios, right.
Then how do we know the numbers match what this page says though?
So, what you're asking for, for each of the schools, if I, if I, I just want to make sure we're getting the right information. You're, you're asking for that cover sheet for each of the schools to be updated.
For that to be upgraded and to make sure that the line items for personnel, certified personnel is true.
Match up to it.
We're saying that the 161,447, I'm just picking the middle school page 77, was truing up the numbers to actuals. Where did these positions come out? I just don't know where these positions came out of, exactly. If 161 is the difference between average versus actuals, that's fine. But if 161 is the difference between average versus actual plus losing a coach, that's a whole different story that the people out there need to understand as well as the people who have to approve this because we do the small vote, but then the big vote is people having confidence in our budget. And I'm not sure I have confidence in this number right now, and I hate to say that because it's been a long process to get here. But the explanation tonight of the actuals made me wonder now, which, so, sorry, I don't mean to be negative. Exactly, and if that cover page says that we're losing a teacher, then let's not say we're not losing a teacher. Let's say the reality of our budget is we've lost a classroom teacher.
No, 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 not losing classroom teacher.
If we haven't, then this has to be accurate and we have to make sure it matches these numbers.
We're not losing classroom teachers.
And I think that it took an extraordinary amount of work for the middle school SGC to go through and really make sure that they're getting what they requested. Because this is not working out to me. And that's disappointing after all the work that I know went into it.
So, okay, I got that. Mary, how's her?
Well, I just wanted to point out, it's also in the high school on page 86. And English language instruction is going down 173,000.
Yeah, we put, we said that.
Same with the math instruction, no, not the math, the natural physical sciences is going from 457,000 to 250. So, so we're losing those teachers? I mean, what are those positions?
I wrote those myself, those are the things that I wrote myself. That's the same I wrote, how can we have those numbers because we have not, there's no reduction. Do the same thing I wrote myself.
Weren't these part of the questions that we answered, no?
I can't remember now, there have been a lot of questions, okay, they may be in there.
This is just truing the budget, the 171 in English language instruction?
I mean, because some of the categories seem to have these big divergences and other ones have none, so it's like, did you get the average closer for health or, I guess, I'm not good at counting.
If we took a coach from the high school on page 90, you have an ELA coach 1-1 for 2018, 2019, academic math. We already didn't have an academic math coach and so we have zero, so we haven't lost a coach then from the high school. We've gained a teacher, which I think is fabulous because we lost it last year, but that doesn't, if we took one coach from each school, that would leave the high school with zero coaches at all.
No, 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 the high school will have a coach, every school will have a coach.
Right, folks, we don't, we don't have, I don't see, based on the issues that have been raised in discussion so far, that we can pass a budget tonight. I do think that we're going to, I would like to focus on identifying what information we need and reworking of this book we need in order to be, to have a budget that we can look at and pass next week. And if we have to have a special meeting to do it, we do it. How does that sound to folks?
I mean, we can go back to averages and then you'll have averages to averages.
That doesn't move us forward.
Chris, you know, just for a moment, I want to hear from the board and the superintendent about what they would need to, this, would need in this budget to feel confident that they're, that they have answers to the questions that they have. Murphy?
Sounds to me like what we'd like to know is what are the FTE numbers underlying the budget numbers? That doesn't matter whether they're actual or average. If you give us a budget number for 2000, for the budget for 2019, 20, how many FTE positions is that? I mean, it's even trying to figure out coaches versus certified teachers. If you know how many positions you've got, you can straighten out who's who later on. But you do need to know how many bodies you're talking about behind every number.
But don't you need the summary page for each school to reflect the reality of what the positions are going to be in that school?
Yeah, you need to know what the FTE positions are that match up with the budget numbers that we've got.
Making a list, so we have, we have...
They need to make sense.
The summary page for the staffing levels in each, in each school need to reflect the, like, what we were just talking about earlier, like with the coaching. No, was it coaching?
Coaching, yeah.
And then, as Murphy said, the FTEs underlying the budget numbers. Mark?
I would agree with her, but theoretically, they have the FTEs, they're in the budget. What I don't have is agreement between the superintendent and the finance office and the personnel office as to what the numbers are. We removed people that the superintendent says we shouldn't have removed. So I need those two offices to free the budget before they give it back to me.
True that up.
That those, yeah, let the personnel department, the superintendent, the finance director get together and go through this and make sure that there are open spaces here where there shouldn't be. And a library person wasn't removed where it shouldn't have been removed. Because now looking at putting the budget up another $170,000 before, I need to reduce it.
Well, now, yeah, right, absolutely.
I mean, just to let you know, we did meet with, you know, the building superintendents, the building principals, we met with HR. So it's not like we didn't go through the nine yards, but we'll take the extra steps that you want.
Now, are there other things that people have questions about that haven't already been identified?
Ken?
Yes, Mark.
I guess the other issue that I'm not hearing, I think it's in here, but if someone can point out to me, are we making efforts to address the health fund shortfall? Do we need to make up money in that and is that addressed in this budget?
You missed, you weren't at the Board of Finance meeting last night, but I should report to you all that at that meeting, well, a week ago, I went to the Board of Finance and spoke with them about our support for them getting actual numbers from, that were recommended to us by Lockton over the past five years. And also what our experience has been and where there may be any shortfalls. And also the reserves, what was recommended on the reserves and whatever. We got, a week later, the consultant that works for the town and on the workers, at the workers' comp end from the, from the firm...
H.D. Seeger.
H.D. Seeger, presented us with, with numbers. What was agreed upon last night at the Board of Finance was that representative from the, from the Board of Ed, a representative from the Town Council and a representative from the Board of Finance... from the Town Council, and a representative from the Board of Finance would work with Rita on our side, and the, and Nada on the town side, to come up with a proposal for how to take the resolution that was passed in 2012 to guide this whole self-insurance process, and move beyond that and develop set policies on how the town, the Board of Ed, and the Board of Finance would, Christian and Dr. Garcia were there, and Rita was there, too, how, how they would, we need to adopt a policy at the Board of Ed level to make sure that we're doing the correct care and feeding of our self-insurance plan. That includes making sure that, in addition to any monies that are put in by the employees and the retirees, if there's more money that we need to be putting in, that we put it in, and that we can figure out how we're going to deal with any shortfalls on the reserves. But what, what I'd like to do is recommend that we don't try to resolve the reserve issue in the budget this, right now, but that we, we've been asked to come back to the Board of Finance with a proposal for how, moving forward over the next couple of years, we, we address the reserve backlog issue. Does that help answer your question at all, Mark?
Well, it gives me an update, but my understanding was, we are in a deficit situation, from what Christian has told us earlier in the month, that we, we need to put money into that just to, to cover our expenses. And I thought we were addressing it somewhere in the budget, I just wasn't sure where.
We've addressed, we've addressed the estimated expenses for, that Lockton gave us for the coming fiscal year.
Do we know what it's going to cost us? We just don't know how we're going to pay for it.
Well, we've, well, we don't know what it's going to cost. We know what Lockton expects it to cost us. It will cost more or less than that number.
But do we know how we're going to pay for it? My question is, have we reflected any money in this year's budget to make up for any of the shortfall?
Not for the shortfall.
Not for the shortfall. Not for the shortfall. Unless we decide we want to allocate money to deal with that. And I will suggest that we go back and look at the number that we have into
the budget right now for eighteen, nineteen, to make sure it's the number that Lockton gave us. Because today I was looking at the numbers, and I was using my calculators to make some addition and subtraction, and I doubt that the number that we have. So I think now that we're going to review the budget, Rita, and let's go back and drill in, to make sure that the number that we have in here is the number that Lockton gave us.
So, Mark?
It's not going to be the number in the book, because there's four revenue sources. There's grants, there's retirees, there's employees, and there's employer pool. The only thing that gets budgeted in the budget, I keep repeating, is the net budget. The gross budget is what Lockton gives us. The net budget is what the board budgets after the revenues from the grants, which are substantial, can be anywhere between one point five to two point two million, and the retirees, which go anywhere between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand, and the employees, which put in over a million dollars, okay? The board has to put in the remainder. So those sources have to be added up, those four pieces, to get to the eleven million, zero, six, zero, which Lockton is saying we need to put in next year.
Well, so, Christian, I think that what we need to do is, we need to have a conversation at the board level about how we are going to move forward, and how we resolve this year's budget issues. And as Mark said, making sure that we're, we're, we're figuring out how we're going to deal with what's projected for next year. We're not going to be able to resolve all that in the next week, Mark. And in fact, the Board of Finance has asked us to come up with a plan that may take a little longer than, you know, a little longer, because we have to dig ourselves out of a hole.
They want to do two things. They want to, they want to recoup the deficit, and they want to rebuild the.
The reserve.
The reserve.
Right.
You do that between five and ten years. So, I mean, if you're talking about a deficit of two million dollars, ten years, it's like five hundred thousand dollars a year. It's significant, but I mean, it's tolerable. I mean, that's up to you. I'm not.
That's a, it's a different conversation, essentially, but there is eight, oh, there's oh, what, eight, eight million, some, something, I forget what the number is.
Funding and insurance is, there's three components to it. There's the past service, there's past service amortizing the past service that hasn't been funded, there's funding the normal amount, which is that year's claims, and then there's funding a reserve, anywhere between zero, ten, fifteen percent. So those three components have to be looked at.
Right. But in the, in the short term, I think to Mark's question, we need to just take, relook at the numbers that are in this budget, to make sure that we're putting what we need to put in for the upcoming year, forgetting about the, not just, you know, we're not going to solve the reserve in, in, in the short term.
So, my understanding, though, is that the eight million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars that's in the proposed budget on page twenty-seven, or page twenty-six, rather, is the net number that you estimated after pulling out what you expect to get from the other three sources?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Because benefits includes about seven line items.
Yeah, there's a few other.
The biggest one is FICA Medicare, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand. The health benefits, that net number, is the biggest number. But then you also have unemployment,
Workers' Comp.
Fifty thousand.
And Workers' Comp.
Life insurance, dental, no, dental is part of the medical, so that's together.
Well, I mean, I know you can.
It's the biggest piece of that.
I know you can break it down, but, but the, but the, the balance, the, the net number is included in the eight million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
So the way we went at it was, we took what Lockton, Lockton estimated for next year for dental, what they estimated for medical, which they said included a three percent reserve, which is a number of eleven million, sixty thousand dollars. We estimated what the employees would be putting in for their co-pay. We estimated what the grants could put in, which we use the low number versus a high number, like one point five million. Then we estimated what the employer, what the, what the retirees would be putting in, which is two hundred and fifty thousand. And then we came up with our net number, which was.
Seven, seven, six, eight, two.
Okay.
And that's what's in here, embedded in that eight million.
That includes, then, you said it's the, the expected expense plus an additional three percent?
That's what they told us. Was it a three percent? Is that enough?
Okay.
Well, that's a, that's a different conversation, too. I mean, at this point, at this point.
To cover claims.
At, at this point, well, one of the questions that I have about the quote number Lockton gave us, based on what I heard last night.
Okay, but I don't really want to talk about this right now. I, I think we're just confusing people.
But basically, basically, for this year, in terms of claims, it's in there.
So what I would like for next week is a, on that line item, an explanation of how that relates to what Lockton recommended, and then what you just described verbally, Christian, you know, the different streams that go into funding that, and how we made those decisions.
I think, actually, I'm neglectful by not putting that detail in there. I should be putting that detail in, because it's a source of so much confusion to people, and it's complicated. It's not straightforward.
I just think, especially given the, the, the realization that we need to grapple with this, and the fact that the, that the Board of Finance has, has basically directed us to, not just us, the town, us and the Board of Finance, to deal with this moving forward. Any sort of simple, one-page description of how we're making this, what's going into this calculation would be very helpful for us, okay?
Yeah, it gives us the transparency that they want.
Right.
We're addressing the issue.
Right. And it, and it will help me and Rita, since we have, are the two designees that were designated last night, to work with the people from the town and the Board of Finance to come up with the policy solutions moving forward, okay? Okay. So, at this point, what we're doing is, we're coming back with more information. What, anything else before we wrap this up?
Is this more information for next week?
Well, we have to take action on this budget.
Any sense of what, what we think we should be coming in? We add it all up again?
Well, we're adding in the tech, the two positions that were identified, and we're clarifying that, that admin position from the middle school, to make sure that that's really in there the way it should be. And we've asked for details on the staffing changes by school, trued up by personnel, finance, and superintendent, you know, because those cover sheets should reflect, reflect as, as close as possible, the reality that we expect moving forward.
And we should go back and look at the insurance.
Right. And, and we're looking, and we're relooking at the insurance, and we're getting the explanation on that.
Confirmation where the ICs and the coaches went.
Right. Confirmation on ICs and coaches, yes. Anything else? Knowing that we are, at this point, at four-one, four point one-two percent, and then, but you'll be coming back to us, I'm sure, with a budget that may be higher for dealing with these other issues that we've raised today, maybe four point six percent.
Oh.
Then we get to start working on scenarios.
No, let's not have a bunch of scenarios.
What happens if cuts happen?
Well, that.
Not next week, though.
No, I said, and then, after next week.
Confirm, we have to be talking, once we prove something about how we're going to present it to the Board of Finance. We have one Board of Finance here who's patiently been sitting through our discussions, but, so confirmation on, oh, what was the one I was writing?
ICs and the coaches?
Yeah, ICs and coaches, okay. Where are they going? You know, where are they coming from?
Where do we take them out?
Where are they coming from? Okay. So, folks, I'm asking, yes, Mark?
So are we, as a board and then council, saying they can come back with whatever they want to come back with, four, or four point five, or four, four point six? I would be more comfortable telling the staff that they need to come back with a budget of three percent. How are you going to get to three percent? I don't think four point six passes. Very concerned about that. And, and that's fine, if that's, if the board feels they want to go four point six. But I think we, I would be more comfortable giving the staff some guidance as to how high up we want to let them go. They could come, are we saying if they come back next week with five percent, we'll just vote for it, because that's what they presented to us?
I'm not saying we're going to vote for it, but we've asked for some things.
I guess I'm asking, I, I would like to make a motion that we limit the total percentage increase for next year's, next week's budget.
Somebody want to second that motion?
You want to put a number on it? I would, I would say it has to be limited. I would say three and a half.
Do I get a second to that?
I'm willing to limit it, but I don't know three and a half is where I'm willing to limit it.
So you're not seconding his motion, or you're seconding his?
I'm, I'm seconding limiting it, but not to three and a half.
We're still, we're still discussing what we want to do here.
Well, so you're seconding, but you're not, he put a motion on to sec, to, to limit it. Okay, so you're not, so is there a second to Mark's motion that's on the table? Okay, there's no second. Murphy?
So, if we take where we started this evening, and add a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it comes out over fifty million. Somehow or other, somehow or other, that, I just, I would like to keep it under fifty million, which is basically keeping it down to.
A percent increase.
Somewhere around four.
Four point something. You have to be four point something, because four point one-two.
Yeah, well, closer to four than, than not.
It is over fifty.
That's what you're thinking.
It, it just seems to me that we had a budget last, what was the, what was the budget that passed the referendum last year? What was the number?
One point.
It was forty, no, no, forty, is it forty-seven million dollars that we passed at budget referendum last September?
It's probably in the budget book.
It is in the budget book.
Yeah, but.
Of course, in the back of the budget book here.
Yeah, but.
Eight, so it was forty-seven, nine, seven, six, zero, five, five.
Okay, so close to forty-eight million. But to suddenly jump over fifty million, I think is probably going to raise a lot of eyebrows. So if we could keep below fifty million dollars.
Mary?
I don't really agree with that reasoning, because we've asked for some additional information, and I think we should just get that information. You know, the idea of saying, like, ninety-nine cents looks better from a sales perspective than a dollar, I, I think we're, this is a more serious issue, and maybe the town would actually like to make up for all these one point eight budgets that have so devastated the schools.
I think if they pass four percent, they will have made up for a lot of it.
Well, I, I, I'm sort of with Mary on waiting to see what comes to us next week, and then moving, you know, we can, we can make some decisions there. But if people want to put a motion on the table to put a percentage out, now's your chance to do it.
My concern is, I, I understand we want to put forth the best budget for the, my concern is time. If they come back next week with a, with a budget of four and a half percent, or whatever it is, and we decide that it's only going to be this, or it's going to be below fifty, fifty million, do we have time for them to retool the budget again?
No.
Bring it back for my vote? So my concern is, you've put us against the wall in terms of time. So we should give a directive that it stays below fifty million, or we should give a directive that it doesn't go any higher than four percent? Otherwise, where am I going to go if I, if we come next week and they give me a budget of fifty-two million? Because it answers all our questions.
Tracy? I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we respectfully request that they come back with a budget under four, four percent or under. It's just a little bit less than we are now, considering we're adding in positions. And the explanation should be given to us next Wednesday, where the cuts came from. So we don't get a budget book on Wednesday, or even this weekend, or something like that, and flip through and try to figure out where the cuts came from. There needs to be a cover page, whatever, that says, you know, you asked us to come in at four percent or lower, we needed to add these positions back, at the request of the SGC and the agreement of the board, therefore, the cuts came from X, Y, and Z.
Okay, so there's a motion on the.
Can't come out of benefits.
There's a motion on the floor.
No, it hasn't been seconded.
No, I said, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion that is, that's been made to come in at four percent or under, with an explanation of where those changes are.
I'll second it.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Mark has seconded it. It's their discussion.
I'm just of the school that if we ask for less, and then they cut some, we're getting less than, less than, less. And by the time it actually passes at referendum, we're at one point seven percent. So we're telling the taxpayers, we need four percent. And this is what we've cut to get to the four percent, but this is what we need. This is our, our, our minimum. And then when the town, and it's the Board of Finance's purview, and I understand their fiduciary responsibility, but this is what we need. So then when we come back and say, after the Board of Finance cuts it, that means cutting teachers, that means cutting whatever it means cutting, this is where, how we got to where we are. And then people need to show up at a Board of Finance meeting and say, and they have in the past, Ms. Hanil, you know, attests that, you need to get them out en masse and say, we want you to add it back. And when enough people show up, the Board of Finance is usually responsive, maybe not completely, but in some way. And that's how we need to get this passed.
Mary, you had your hand up. Sorry.
Well, I just don't see how we can get any position put back in when it will be, you're asking for the budget to be below what this is. So I, I don't understand what's going to happen, what kind of magic has to happen for that.
Can we respond?
Yes.
Okay. Well, basically, what we're saying is, is that this is what we think is the most fiscally responsible. Because if we come in at four point three percent, the Board of Finance is going to say, we're going to take one percent right off the top. And we, as a board, aren't even going to know, have any idea where that might come from. So if we start at four and say, we needed four and a half, we said we can work it on four, they bring us to three and a half, this is what it means, then we have some kind of idea of where we're landing. Because they're going to cut it either way. I'm guaranteeing that they're going to cut it either way. Murphy?
It, it doesn't seem to me that the questions we've raised tonight are in the range that's going to push it to four and a quarter, or four and a half. But it's as easy to add as it is to subtract. So if we, if we ask for a proposal at four, along with, what did you have to take out of here to get to four? And we look at that and say, we don't want to take that out, then we can go to four point oh-five, or four point one. So I think that's probably, I mean, you need some benchmark about where we're trying to accomplish here. And you know what we want. So if we're going to put, if we're going to put those.
I mean, that's more helpful for us.
If we're going to put the hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we identified tonight as something that should not have been taken out of the budget back in, then you either have to, you know, you have to find someplace else to pay for that, is what we're saying.
It's a given tag.
Or, or tell us what it would cost to pay for that.
This is the board discussing it right now.
And then, and then we can, so the sense, I, I'm getting the sense that the board would like to be somewhere around the four percent number next week.
Mary, and then Tracy.
Just, I would like to say that it's, I find it irresponsible to speculate about what a different board is going to do, or it's unproductive. And I know that there's a history, but I. And I know that there's a history, but I don't see any point in our trying to decide what the Board of Finance is going to do.
Tracy?
I think if we had three or four more weeks to debate this, or at least one more, you know, or two more meetings, like next week to come back and say, yeah, that's good or that's not so good, and then give you guys one more pass at it, then I would say, we don't need to cap this. Let's see what you guys come back with next week. If you come back at five, well, then we'll start, you know, being, being a little more conservative. But if you come back at four point two, as opposed to four point one eight or whatever we are at, then, you know, maybe we should just give that a go at the Board of Finance, but we just don't have the luxury of that time, which is sometime, which is something we get to every single year at this point. And I think in the future, we need to look, like I said last year, at getting this in December and starting this conversation in December instead of January. And if that means Dr. Garcia needs to push her timeline up to September, and if that's when we finally pass the previous year's budget, that's what we have to do. And I'm respectful of the timeline, but this crunch time happens to us every single year, and we can't...
Push it up two weeks this year? We want to push it up till four weeks next year.
That's fine, but if we had more time, I'd say, show us what you got, and then we'll, you know, we'll adjust as we see fit, but we don't have the luxury of that right now, which is why I think that we need to be a little bit responsible in this.
Any more comments on the motion that's on the floor to, to ask the administration to come back to us with a budget that's four point, four percent or less? Is that the motion right there? Movements been made and seconded, we've discussed it, anything else on that? All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor? All those against? Any abstentions?
Two and two, you're going to have to decide.
I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the motion, for the motion. And, and Tracy's suggestion that we can always, when you come back to us, I would, we want the actual, like, where those sacrifices were made, and we may decide to go to four point one or something like that.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Public comment?
No, you have capital improvement.
Oh, yeah, capital improvement, sorry. Thank you. Did people get a chance to look at the capital improvement budget? Is there anything that...
We just have the total figure, I didn't bring...
I didn't bring it with me, I didn't bring it.
Have we, Mrs. Chairman?
Yes.
At the time that was passed out to us, it still had errors in it, and they were supposed to be corrected. Was it corrected?
We gave it to, to, we need to take a look at, and he said that the roof, the roof figures were straight from the architect, from the buyer, so those were verified by him.
So we haven't gotten, but to your point, Mark, we haven't gotten a document with the corrections.
We have to give that to you then.
Okay, so we can't take action tonight. We need the document with the corrections in addition to the budget.
Let's take it to the next week's back.
May I ask a question about it, though, before we get a final document next week or this weekend or something like that? Was there a reason that the North Wyndham roof was put ahead of the Wyndham Center roof? There had been discussion when Wayne came to my School Planning and Design Committee meeting through Mr. Harris about Wyndham Center needing to be done more than North Wyndham.
Well, there, I guess there are two different discussions going on.
Okay.
Because there was a discussion that I'm aware of that took place with the Board, the Planning and Design, well, with the committee, is that North Wyndham roof needed to be done before Wyndham Center.
North Wyndham roof is older, but I was told that Wyndham Center was in more dire need.
I, North Wyndham is the biggest crisis ever.
Okay, all right, okay.
We've been patching and repairing it consistently.
Okay.
Every rains this year, so.
Actually, we have Wyndham Center before North Wyndham, and after the information was given to us, we went and moved North Wyndham.
Okay, all right.
It's the older, it's much older.
It's the older roof, too, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay, right. Any, any other questions, comments? Yes, Murphy?
I think, I think there's a serious case to be made that we ought to put up for, put in for both of those roofs. I mean, you know, they're, they both really need to be done. The question is which one, it's almost a question of which one's leaking worse at this point. It's been, and, and then the age numbers on the North Wyndham roof don't make sense to me, given, given when the school was last renovated. I think that roof's older than you think. And I think it might be penny wise and pound foolish to act like we can wait another year on either one of those roofs.
So, anything else? Any public comment? Yes. Susan, hold on up.
Okay, hi, I'm Susan Collins, and I realize that I started on the Board of Education in nineteen eighty-five. I was on the board for twenty, twenty-eight or twenty-seven years. During that time, and I think Mark could probably agree with this, is we, at every single board meeting, we, we voted on budget transfers. We had every single meeting, we looked at where the budget transfers were and what was happening, and we also had a budget report every single meeting, right, Mark?
Correct.
Okay, so we knew every single month where the transfers were, why it was happening, and, you know, we could make that decision, and we were responsible for that. So I'm wondering if you should go back to that, because then that wouldn't be a surprise. I'm wondering also, is there an adopted budget from la, you know, after last year's vote to approve the budget? Is there any kind of budget book, adopted budget?
Online.
No.
No, no, the proposed budget is online.
We have never done it because, but we can put it out there if you want to in the future. No, after the iterations...
It's not my decision, but my question was...
We will put it up.
We put, we put out a recommended, and we put out the final to the Board of Finance, but after the votes are done, we don't put, we don't redo the book. We haven't done it in the past.
But that would be helpful because...
Sure.
Okay, we're not supposed to be in discussion during public comment.
I'm just saying...
I know that. But, anyway, I feel like it would have been helpful for us, the School Governance Council, to look at the adopted budget, not the proposed budget, but the adopted budget, because then we would know what we were looking at. And the, the last thing is, I am really concerned...
It's in the budget book.
Okay. Christian, you're not supposed to... Christian, you're not supposed to be talking to me.
You're not supposed to be talking to Christian.
So, okay, so what I am very, very concerned about is the in-school suspension at the middle school. Now, I know you didn't cut it, and I thank you for that, but it doesn't, it wasn't cut last year, and it doesn't exist. So my concern is, there's no in-school suspension at the middle school. There's a hundred and, over a hundred and forty-five out-of-school suspensions for Wyndham Middle School. That's outrageous. We're not helping those kids. We're sending them home to their PlayStations. And they come back, and they're, they're not getting any help. We need to figure out, we, we worked really hard as a board, when I was on the board, not to do out-of-school suspensions. We did everything in our power to make sure we were identifying what these kids' needs were and how we were going to help them become better students, better citizens. But to have a hundred and forty-six out-of-school suspension, and I know it's gone up, because I know there was a fight there recently, is outrageous, is unacceptable and outrageous. So I know it's in the budget, but I'm concerned, what's going to happen is what happened last year, or this year, I should say, is that they had to take the out-of-school suspension teacher to fill a void in another classroom. And that, I mean, there's a multitude of reasons why that shouldn't be happening. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comment?
Hello, my name is Kristin DeGray. I live on Sirwan Ave in Willimantic. I have two children, one at Wyndham Middle and one at Barrows, and I also work at North Wyndham School. I just wanted to say that, thank you to the board members who are asking the questions because from my standpoint, transparency has not been a quality of this board of late. And I think that accuracy in the budget and transparency might promote support for the budget. It's been really hard for me to educate myself about this process because of the lack of accurate information, because I couldn't see an adopted budget for eighteen nineteen. There was over a million dollars cut from the budget when it passed at referendum, and I have no idea where that money was cut from. So if we want parent and community engagement, which we talk about all the time, we need to see accuracy and transparency, particularly from the budget. I'm also concerned about information being released to the public in a timely manner. You were discussing capital improvements, and I didn't see any of that information on the website. I'm hoping to see an updated budget book on the website before six PM next Wednesday, hopefully, because I'm rushing to Staples and paying twenty bucks to get it printed so that I can come to the meeting and ask questions. I'm hoping that any information that's out there is posted on the website that can help us become engaged in this process. The last thing I wanted to say was that regarding the staff profiles and the inaccuracies in those, I noticed one in particular on page fifty-four for North Wyndham School. It says projected nineteen and, actually, actual two thousand and eighteen, that we have two speech assistants. We do not, we have one.
Kristin, can you tell me how page you're on, please?
I'm sorry, page fifty-four.
Fifty-four, thank you.
And it also says that we have eight tutors, and we do not have eight tutors, we have five. So I didn't look at any of the other schools or ask questions about the other schools, but I'm concerned about the inaccuracies there. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak under public comment? Okay, during that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.